I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, municipal, liberty, and justice for all.
I'm Melody Hesey and I have been honored the chair of this honor's party. Next to the seniority is Kathy Valli and Suzanne is the third member, last, most recent new member, but she's a veteran by now. And you are?
I'm Kristin Collins. Nice to meet you all.
I am Steve Langendorf.
And I'm Cameron Perotti.
And you're here because you answered the call to see whether or not you wanted to be and we wanted to have you as our legal representatives of the town. Can you say your name again?
Cameron Perotti.
So could you tell us about Preity Flaherty? And what you would like to do for the town?
Kristin Collins again and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Municipal Law and Finance Department at Preity along with Steve here. So we, I feel like I should let Steve go through the history of our Municipal Law department because he did start the practice. But we represent at least 25 communities, whether on an off and on basis or a full-time basis, as well as lots of districts like sanitary districts, sewer districts of quasi municipal entities as well. We represent clients as small as, let's see, the town of Prospect or the town of Arasik or Georgetown, maybe some of our smaller, all the way up to Augusta, Kittery, Brunswick. So we see a full range of options from the full range of towns and geographically speaking, we are all over the place as well. But we do have a cluster of towns around here that are quite similar, I think, in demographics and geographics to West Bath. So we've been representing Woolwich for, I think I've had them for 14 or so years at this point, and Arasik and Georgetown. So kind of right here in this region with towns with a lot of coastal waterfront, a lot of disparate taxation type issues, ranging all the way down to a lot of junkyards and things like that that we have to deal with on a daily basis. So we are prepared and equipped to handle pretty much anything from the most mundane into the most unusual. And we were reminiscing about some of our most unusual things today, kind of battling over the mark.
We were having a time.
So that's us. We're really excited to see this particular RFP go out. I have a lot of interest in West Bath. Personally, I've been trying to find property here for years. Unfortunately, it hasn't worked out. And so we're happy to answer any questions. I know I have 20 years in consistent municipal law experience, exclusive municipal law experience. And Steve, how about introduce himself and tell you a little bit about him?
So before I go into that, other than going to the West Bath courthouse, my father's cousin was Nancy and David Hall. They lived here in West Bath and we used to come visit them. So I remember coming to West Bath for many years with my old kid, their Christmas card from West Bath. So it's an old memory. So as I said, I'm Steve Langendorf and I'm actually the founder of our Preity Municipal Law Practice Group. I've been practicing at Preity for 38 years now and originally was a trial lawyer only and did a tremendous number of jury trials and appeals to the state law court. And so I have a good background for always looking at how to understand litigation issues per town. About 31 or two years ago, I became the town attorney for Rangeley, having basically no experience at all in that area. But my partner, Senator Bell, lived there and he kind of got me this gig. And so I did that and after a few years of doing that, there was an opening. A long-term attorney for the city of Augusta, Charlie Morsch, had retired after 24 years. And so I was appointed as corporation counsel for the city of Augusta and took an oath in January of 1999. So I've been corporation counsel there for over 25 years. That sort of led one thing to another and I kind of, years ago, was studying the market of who the attorneys were and the firms that did this type of work. And I could see who they were and could see there were a lot of really good municipal attorneys that were probably like 15 years older than me and saw that. I think that if I do this right, there's going to be a significant opening, an opportunity to have a great practice in this area. So I've sort of started building our client base over the years. One of our bigger clients after that that we took on was Brunswick and many other towns in between. Things really took off when Kristin joined me about eight years ago now because she represented a number of towns and had great experience in this area. And so between us, we continue to grow our base. Just a week or so ago, we went out to Islesboro and interviewed and they hired us as their attorney. We also just a few weeks ago were hired as attorney for Duran. It's all part of the same sort of practice of our P. So we've been growing the practice, but it's really, the three of us are a full-time litigation team. You know, between the three of us, we take care of everything.
Municipal.
Excuse me, municipal, municipal, excuse me, litigation if necessary. They don't let me out very often. So the three of us are a team that we work very closely together. We meet every week and go over everything that we're working on. But we're also fortunate to be backed up by, you know, we have almost 100 lawyers at Preity Flaherty. So we have every kind of expertise and specialty that one could anticipate, particularly things like being able to work at the legislature, real estate expert, some environmental and so forth. I myself have also a significant background in employment law. And so we try to keep things as close as we can and develop our relationships with the town. And I like to say here that I think everything about being your municipal attorney is being able to develop a relationship with somebody that you can trust. We've been doing this a lot. We can handle all the different parts of municipal law and other attorneys that you talk to also can do all the different types of things. So it's really more a matter of who can you trust, who can you develop a relationship with. And then we think we have a few things that we're able to add specifically because of our location in Augusta and our closer work with all of the different cities and states and the legislature and things. It gives us a little bit of that back on something I referred as well. Anyway, I probably talked more than I needed to, so I'll pass this on to Cam now.
15 seconds.
Hi, I'm Cam Perotti. I am the junior member of the group I guess with only 10 years of practice experience as a attorney. But I've been with Preity Flaherty, the municipal practice group for about three years now. Prior to that, I was up at the state house working in the reviser's office, helping legislators craft laws for LVO for a better course, hopefully, for better. But I got into municipal law before I was at the state house. I was in New York City working for the city government, helping administer their campaign finance program, which is a massive and complex administrative thing. But I sought out Preity's municipal group basically because I really enjoy helping towns and cities, you know, serve their community and accomplish the things that they're trying to accomplish. So to that end, I've started to dabble, not only in just sort of the generalist work, you know, the land use disputes enforcement, drafting ordinances, contractor duty, things like that, but also I've gotten to the public finance realm. So I'm currently acting as one of Preity's bond council. So we assist our municipal clients and other private entities when they need to do a major capital improvement or equipment purchase or something like that to secure funds through the main municipal bond bank or other private lenders. And that's something else that I bring to the table, I think, that previously I haven't had as much access to. But I just reiterate what Kristin and Steve said, which is basically that we can handle pretty much anything you throw at us. And we've got three solid points of contact here for any of your needs. And if there is something highly specialized that comes up, which hopefully it won't, Preity Flaherty is more capable of handling all of that as well.
And we will always though be the point of contact and always manage it. So we're not just farming you out to other strangers within the firm. It's really important that we keep close contact and close control over the work that's being done for our clients.
So would we have one point of contact for the three of you?
We would, I think, work as a team. So Cam and I would be probably our primary points of contact between the two of us for redundancy purposes. I want you to be able to have somebody who's going to pick up the phone if you call or somebody who's able to be at a meeting. You know, there are only 70 days in the week and sometimes we need to be in two different places. So that's why we meet really frequently and keep a price for everything that's going on in our clients so that there is that redundancy and the ability to step in. But we do always keep control and contact between the two or three of us.
What's your experience in the rebau on abatement?
Gee, what's going on with that in this town? No, we were a little back in the minutes and saw some of the issues that have been going on. And I don't know if you read in the local media about Brunswick, but we had a similar type of situation where we had to evaluate whether it was really time to deploy a rebau and the quality of the data and whether the public was ready to accept that revaluation just last year. And in fact, the town decided to pull back on the revaluation for a year to allow a little bit more time for the public to understand the process. But we've done ample revaluations to include overseeing where there are in-house assessors or assessors agents overseeing and helping with mass abatement requests following every evaluation, assisting in the PR side of things, public information side of things. I saw you all, for instance, had a great FAQ document, which is the kind of thing we really think is important. And then even to the point of disputes with revaluation companies we've dealt with. So on the good side of it.
Exactly.
I think your situation is interesting because most of the time that we've had conflict recently with the revales has been because the residential properties are growing up so much in value and the commercial properties are stable or even going down. And so when that tactical starts getting shifted more heavily onto your actual residents as opposed to, you know, the Wal-Mart's of the world and so forth, it obviously is very upsetting people. But your situation seemed more like it was a very astute way of evaluating differences in the shoreline. You know, and obviously the difference between the deep water property and the tidal property is significant. And that's such a major flaw that it kind of sounded without talking to you like maybe the problem that you were, that you were looking at among others. But yeah, I've gone through some very extensive, you know, I've gone through revales for the city of Augusta, which was a huge, huge endeavor. Not too long ago, major outcry because in Winslow, Winslow was kind of having that, you know, commercial versus residential property. But so much of it is education. And also people also just think, well, like, you know, the value went up by so much, that means my bill goes up. And I'm actually like, oh, it doesn't work like that. I mean, we still could equalize it off, but it's something we've been, you know, at least Kristin and I have been involved in quite a bit over the years.
As well as very complex abatement requests too?
Oh, I've had a specialty of dealing particularly with commercial abatements to the state board property tax review, number of hearings and so forth, dealing with appraisers regularly. I have, we could get into right now, everything about the different ways to value property, which we, you know, don't want to get into, but that's an area that we're, you know, that we're quite strong in. In fact, we were just looking at, we just did a program, we just did a webinar just a few weeks ago on new legislation that affects municipalities and other programs. So it was interesting that, it's a brand new program we're looking at, is a new type of deferral program for property owners who are above a certain age, which I just can set by the town, there's a previous program that basically deferred all property taxes. And now there's a new program sort of locking it in at a current level and allowing those property taxes to be deferred until properties are sold or someone dies. Even inter-family transfers are still unprotected. But there's some new program, in fact, this one, I wasn't aware of it until I started studying up on this for this last webinar that we did. But there's some options available for people who are kind of caught in the crunch. And this new program gives a lot more flexibility for the town to be able to set the parameters on what the age bracket is, you know, and all the details opposed to this sort of previous other program is much more dictated by the state. So anyway, there's some options available also for people who are really feeling the crunch when you get into a three-ball situation.
What are your thoughts on LD 2003?
Hate it.
I agree.
No, you know what I'll say about LD 2003? It was a lot, it looked a lot worse than it ended up being in implementation, as far as I'm concerned. For a lot of towns that didn't have really thorough zoning or didn't have zoning at all, actually the impact has turned out to be somewhat less because you're applying a density bonus, for instance, to a density that doesn't exist in an ordinance. And you are, like Arasik or Georgetown, we actually looked at the comprehensive plan and said, oh, well, there isn't actually designated growth area. So some of these things that apply in the growth area actually didn't take effect. So there are crafty ways to implement it. I don't know where you all are in that process or what you ended up with. But so much of it is, you know, now is the time to lean in heavily to comprehensive planning.
Monday's D-Day.
Yep, and to zoning that results from it. And I found myself for the first time really strongly advising smaller towns to implement comp plans and zoning because this is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of this erosion of local control. You know, we also saw the sessions still get passed that said, no retroactive ordinances applicable to anything that involves even one housing unit. And this is traditionally how you've responded in smaller towns when there's unexpected growth. You know, we slap a moratorium on it and we wait till the next town meeting and pass something, but now we can't do that. So it's really a time to be extremely proactive and think about what your community wants to look like and how it wants to develop.
Cam, do you have any questions? No, I'm just taking it all in. Some really wonderful answers. You mentioned some interesting incidents that you were talking about. I had asked the other people in that interview last week, what is the most interesting conundrum that you have been faced with? How did you all turn out? Think with all the points each, do you?
We have, and I can, I think it's hard for me to narrow that down to one, but there is one.
With all the good names, of course.
There's one that is by far, stands out above all others, which is a small town, not dramatically far away from here. I was brought on, I had not been the town attorney, but I was brought on because the town attorney at the time had done personal work for the first select board member, which by the way, is not an angry idea because you can get into this, into this situation. And it turned out that the first select board member had just been arrested for corruption. She'd been extorting bribes from a road contractor and then the road contractor set her up with like a recording and a sting. And then they ended up arresting her and that was challenging enough. But then the bigger problem was that one of the other select board members had just resigned and there were only three select board members, so she was arrested. And by, and one of her conditions of her arrest was she was not allowed to go to any town meetings. And so now we were literally left with one select board member, which is very problematic because we didn't even, couldn't even be a court. And so then, within a short amount of time, we, the town manager also got very upset about this because there seemed to have been some complicity between the town manager and this select board member. And so the town manager ended up quitting right during a meeting. And I was sitting there with the one select board member trying to figure out how we're going to deal with the situation. And so we needed to be able to get the town back and running up on its feet. And so it was very challenging figuring out how to do that. And so the plan that I came up with was that the one select board member, even though this was not really allowed by law, called a meeting and called a special town meeting and signed a warrant for a special town meeting to elect two other members to the board. And that is in fact the way that we ended up doing this. So we ended up, we had this special town meeting, they were elected, they were, you know, and no one ever challenged, you know, any of that in court. This select board member ended up going to federal prison for seven years. In fact, she's still there. And also, the town had never had a charter, so that's the way I helped inform a charter committee. And now it's a town that has a very good town manager, has a very fully functioning board of selectmen, just took a whole hodgepodge of different random sort of land use type ordinances they had and reconsolidated and then to one land use ordinance for the first time. So of course, and now it's a town that's doing very well, but believe me, sitting there trying to figure out what to do with literally, you know, should we go to court and file some sort of petition? But we just decided, let's take a chance and do it this way and set up the town meeting. And it all ended up working out, you know, really well, but there was absolutely no roadmap to go to. The law is really clear that you can't have one select person do anything. So if it had been challenged in court, I don't know what we would have done exactly, but fortunately it wasn't. So I'll go with that one as being my probably most challenging one. There are others, but they don't quite beat me, not at all.
All right, I've got three rapid fire. One is two city councilors who were surveilling a town employee who they thought was committing these deeds, which is of course not their role at all, as I have the city manager. The second, they were of course accused of harassment and all sorts of other things. The second would be one of our towns who had about 50% of the roads they were plowing, turned out were all private roads. And they had no idea and had received court legal counsel in the past that they could do these things and had really deficient documents that expired 27 years ago. So we got them a private and special act in the legislature to give them a breadth of time to be able to fix that and to sort of create this private road maintenance program where they got public improvements out of them. But it was quite a process. And I would just highlight that that's a thing that Preity does really well, you know, that we can jump right on with a key. Or I don't know.
Geez, I said it.
Legislation and get something accomplished quickly. And then my last one is I became city attorney Belfast. I used to practice up there, but stepped away when I went to Preity and then joined in again after their city attorney retired after 30 years. You may know of a little project called Nordic Aqua Farms up there that is the source of a lot of litigation and drama that I stepped right into the middle of. The city had just taken a piece of property by the domain domain to essentially allow the rights for this project. So we were there just in time to not have any input into that decision, but also deal with the seven or eight lawsuits that have come since then. So that has been just quite challenging to balance the city's economic development goals with a substantial portion of the population there that is vehemently against it for environmental reasons and very waning interest, I would say, on the part of others in this project that's been wished for, you know, six or seven years at this point.
I'll throw in one more quickly and then you can go. You got it Cam? You got it? Go for it Cam.
So my most major one is probably an old-fashioned border war that's occurring in southern Maine between the towns of New York and Kittery. So for those of you who don't know, Maine was essentially annexed by Massachusetts in 1653. The Massachusetts Bay Colony established a border between Kittery and New York essentially by force. And since then, the legislature of Maine has never actually acted to establish that boundary line between the two towns. So in 1820, after Maine became a state, the legislature passed a law saying like, all the boundaries as they are now are the legal boundaries. And also put in place this process of perambulation where you all are supposed to go out and walk the border every three to five years to make sure that nobody is moving things where they shouldn't be moved. But that essentially didn't happen in Kittery and New York for about 200 years. So now New York believes that Kittery's border is not actually where it should be and is attempting to claim essentially, you know, 35 acres or so of land with the...
Waterfront?
No, a little tiny bit, but mostly just right between the all land boundary. And it's got $8 million in assessed valuation, so it's a non-signative hit. And there's, you know, established roads and utilities that the town of Kittery's invested in there. So Steve and I actually put on pretty defense and got the first attempt to take the land thrown out in an early stage in court. And they're currently scheming a second type of defense. But you're dealing with, you know, surveys from 1650 and laws that were written in 1820 and no real documentation in the interim. And it seems kind of crazy to attempt and just come in and say this boundary that's been here that, you know, people have built on, relied on for their homes and their livelihoods is now up for grabs, I guess.
We're doing, we're working on this right now.
Yeah.
There's 15, there's 15 homes that will be moved into the other town including three that the line goes right down through the middle, you know, it's really unbelievable.
Yeah.
We're actually looking to solve that in the legislature as well. I also want to just quickly throw in, we had a big problem with a TIF and one of my, it's a $2 million error because a deadline was missed. It's going to cost new value $2 million. And so we went to meet the governor and the Department of Economic and Community Development. And the governor told us, well, if you can get a, you know, I'm not going to just fix this for you, which I thought she had the authority to do, but she wouldn't. And so he said that if you can get a private and special law through legislature to fix this problem, then I'll sign the law, which we did end up doing. And we had to go through the community process and made it getting private and special law pieces to just move a certain deadline for this specific, you know, TIF so it didn't cost the city $2 million. So fortunately, we had lobbyists as part of a team who were able to, you know, to help pull that off because that was a pretty major problem for the cities, you can imagine. All right, that's enough.
That brings to my question about, how do you apportion billing? So if I call you or the town administrator gets in touch and the call takes 15 minutes, how is...
We go by the tenth of the hour.
By the 10th of the hour, so every 10 minutes?
Every six.
Six, so that's right, six minutes. So every six minutes, that's the standard then?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we had it. And we've been, we've been allowing the members of the public who are frequently here to ask questions as well.
Happy to do that.
David, you have a question? Listen, David Hesey, he's a frequent attender of these meetings and he happens to be my little partner.
There you go. The town recently just passed a new comp plan with half of Midcoast, I think it's Alvin. And they're also reviewing the town ordinances now. So I was interested about your thoughts on things we should stop watching for in the land use concerning the new laws in the state of Maine. Is that something, you're well versed on the new rules and regulations as far as forming that into the new land use ordinances the town is developing now?
Absolutely. I think easily 10 of our towns, we've done full revisions based on LD 2003 in the last year.
We're in the process of doing that now and trying to make the orders make sense from one section to the next section because it's over 50 years we've had to change.
Well, we've been involved in a number of towns where they've basically done sort of a comprehensive review of those ordinances and tried to either more than re-identify. It's made sense and stuff like, Brunswick, for my tremendous effort, it took a number of years and they had an outside consultant that we worked with in that. Yeah, we keep very...
And then they gave me two weeks to review it after five years.
We keep very up to date on that. It's out of our legislative, we have legislative analysts who keep track of that stuff actually when they're actually passing through the legislature. So we know before, we're not just reacting, but something that's been filed, you know, filed in the legislature that we're sort of behind and often showing up and trying to influence. and trying to influence how those come out beforehand. But, and that's something we really pride ourselves on doing.
Very probably because Max Johnson's one helping revise the ones you've now...
Oh, great, I can...
I think, well, we've got Cam from the reviser's office. So he's got sort of the unique skillset of sort of helping to consolidate and clarify language. But I think we all are exceedingly practical in how we view almost everything. And we don't want to mess around with an ordinance that's unduly complicated. People, regular people have to read it and regular people have to apply it on your boards. And so often, things just get built on, built on, built on, built on. And nobody goes back and thinks, how is this all working together? And is it user friendly, more importantly?
Well, that's one of the things we should know is certain sections don't make sense for the other section of the legislation.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And we also have, having had so much experience and having pretty good breadth of towns, we have a lot of language we can easily pull that sort of, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And samples to give, you know, what do you think of this one? Is this capturing what you guys have in mind, that sort of thing?
Steve?
Steve Winter, back to revaluations. The state has a law regarding town revaluation contractors saying basically what they need to do. It appears to be somewhat ambiguous. Have you folks had any experience interpreting that law and applying it?
Don't all of us want some? Well, you know, the thing is the contract is usually going to be way more specific than the state law. And so it's usually, it usually ends up being, did they comply with the contract more than did they comply with the state law?
I understand that and we have that issue too.
Yeah.
But in particular, I want to concentrate on the state part because there does not appear to be a lot of interpretation available. If there was such a case, it may well be precedent setting and well needed on my head. And so the question is, have you ever been involved in anything that further interpreted the state law regarding revaluation contractors?
I mean, I know that I've been in contact with Maine Revenue Services at least a couple occasions to discuss a revaluation process and whether they felt it met a certain standard.
Yep.
But litigating that or anything in more depth, I don't think I've ever asked to do. But I have seen a number of contract disputes in this area, yeah.
I usually get involved just in the review, as Kristen said, the view of those contracts and making sure that we have all of those questions answered as best we can. You know, like, I told you I was a litigator and so, you know, there's always going to be ton, there are often things that you don't anticipate unfortunately and they come up. But I didn't, again, I might just specifically litigate any of the, the certainly area in the familiar world.
And we've all certainly had experience litigating around, you know, vague statutory language and getting results that are advantageous to, you know, our particular clients. Part of the, you know, advantage with vague statutes is that you can read it either way. So it's about convincing the court which way.
So I've been tied to that, should we not be fruitful in that process? And have to then go back and work with what we have on hand? How can you assist in that process? So if all the comps aren't there or the definitions we requested we don't receive, how would you take that forward?
Are you talking about me in a dispute with your contractor and trying to basically get...
What we paid for?
What? Well, yeah, I mean, we generally, the way we handle those kinds of things is we articulate whatever, you know, after we've, you know, you've sort of gone through whatever reasonable process you can, you know, without layer, so to speak. You know, then we kind of articulate things into, you know, a very specific demand letter with a threat basically of litigation and what we expect our results to be and so forth. And then generally, we push to try to have disputes like that mediated as soon as possible. We find that a skilled professional mediator is very, very helpful. And we have a number of people that we know that we recommend, you know, for that. If you can get the parties together almost, almost always, not every time, but a very high success rate of being able to resolve those types of disputes by working through a mediator, especially understanding the litigation. It was a consequence, I don't know if it was an arbitration clause as part of the agreement, that sometimes is, you know, something that's in there as well. But I would usually try to push people, if you're not getting results from either your formal process or your initial demand back and forth with the attorneys to get an mediation as soon as possible.
Whereas we're that commitment rapidly approaching. We still have a significant amount of underestimate.
Well, I think the, maybe the first question is, what is the pressure to implement those new values? And does it make sense, even if we're technically behind on assessment ratio, to hold off while these issues are getting resolved? I mean, what's the practical reality of not doing it in a timely way or fully? Are there parts of the data that we feel are more reliable? Can we implement those?
Do we say, where is the data?
No.
So with all the clients you have, yeah, I'm sure you're taking on new clients all the time. And I think we have some significant work we need done here. How do you prioritize your customers as far as, so you get so much work that you start to get a little clogged up? How do you prioritize?
You know what, I do feel like municipal law is a lot of triage. Because we get, you know, I'll look at what I do in a given day and how many matters I touch as compared to somebody in the firm who maybe does corporate law. And they worked on two things that day for two clients. And sometimes for me, it's 15. And it's really a skillset that one learns very, very early on practicing in this, in this field. We try to review our emails, at least a first pass through them many times during the day. I do at least try to ask my clients, and I think everybody has their own mechanism, but if it's urgent, text me, call me, put the little red exclamation point next to the email. You know, if I see those things, I will jump right on it. If there's a deadline, absolutely please tell us, we will prioritize it. If you call and one of us doesn't pick up, please try any of the three of us and the other one will absolutely be able to help you. So, you know, those are certain things. But obviously, if it's a time sensitive issue, it's going to get addressed as soon as we can.
Yeah, we've never, we, obviously has a lot to do with communication. Have to let us know or we have to be a student of us to realize how, you know, urgent the situation is. But we're very good at being able to prioritize all these things between the three of us. We've never had a situation, I can never recall where, you know, something that was important, somebody wasn't handled in a timely manner. And we will get back to you very quickly. I'm with Kristen, I text with my clients. I, you know, my phone is, you know, more or less surgically implanted to me. So I'm answering my emails all the time, evening. You know, I'm saying, hey, we answer emails, texts at night. If there's something important, obviously, we'll be working on it at night or the weekend, you know, whatever it is. Our clients are important to us and we understand that what you're doing is important when there are times where we have to throw all hands out if something, you know, like, there may be things that we list out from other attorneys in the firm. We have a lot of other troops to bring in if we need to.
One thing we don't do a lot of that some firms do is farm things out to associates. So, you know, you might ask a firm a question and you might have your point person who you think is doing the work, but they're not actually doing the work of asking somebody who's a year or two in to do the work. And they, that person makes a big memo and then the managing attorney reviews that memo and they give you the advice. And there's a lot of inefficiency in that and a lot of expense. We just don't do that. We like to be right on top of things for our clients and have the personal contact and have the ownership of the answer that goes to you. So part of that too is just efficiency and getting answers.
And we've said before, but we're, you know, pretty much more or less in constant communication. We have a ongoing text chain, which lots of other interesting municipal...
It's pretty dorky, it's called Credity Municipal Team, or Credity New E T now.
It's great, and we, you know, exchange calendars every week so we know who's covering what meetings, who's going to be where, who's going to be second court all day, things like that. So we're all available and we have someone on call and...
We also have the same legal assistant who's great at kicking our butts when needed.
Exactly. And, you know, I made my practice to, like Kristen said, basically read an email when it comes in, reach out, ask if there's, you know, a pressing deadline, if it's not clearly stated, and then slotting it in and just doing the triage as necessary. But if an emergency comes up, you have, you have someone's going to resolve it.
Mike, did you have...
The, yeah, I'm older than he is. Access to your firm, how does it best work? Town administrator only, head selectman only, or the entire board? Is that... Generally, it's however, whatever works best for you. There are absolutely some towns where it's very, very strict, you know, protocol. All, you know, everything has to go through the manager, the manager normally contacts us. Most, mostly, certainly, the manager is a primary point of contact, especially at first. But then we start to get to know the department heads and so forth. In town, that's understanding, you know, basically depending on who they are and they may or may not have the authority to contact the town attorney. It's obviously a budget, you know, consideration. In some places like for Agesta, I've been a said corporation councillor for 25 years. It's openly understood that any of the council members may contact me directly, department heads and so forth. We also have a monthly retainer that we do so they aren't all worried about every time they call, you get a bill for code two or whatever that is. So that's actually something we do also offer to a number of towns, both smaller and larger, is a certain thing for now that is you're going to get X level of communication, you know, with us. You're not going to get a bill, you know, for that at a time. But, you know, it's really whatever protocol works for you, we're happy to go along with it.
Well, how does, how does that work? The, we have a, we have a retainer we do and that allows for so many hours of work at that unlimited?
Yeah, sort of. We, what we've done with a number of towns, and larger and smaller, is we come up with what we agree between us is a fair monthly amount for a certain level of services, okay? And that may, and that usually means things like answering any emails that are not complex projects, quick review of something, a letter or a contract or just giving advice on a freedom of access issue or whatever it is. And then we kind of look at, we will come to an agreement and then it covers, that's a way of, department heads can contact us, whatever it is. And you don't have to worry about getting a bill. And we have to sort of say, here's what's included, there isn't what's included. We have these one town that they include almost everything. So it's a much, a higher, quite a bit higher, you know, retainer because, you know, it's a bit of a risk on our part because we don't know how much of this is going to come up. It's a budget certainty kind of thing as well. Because in most cases, until, look, if you're getting into litigating with your rebal person, that's obviously not something that's covered under sort of a normal retainer or, you know. So we sit down and we say, what do you want? You know, what do you think should be covered? What do you want covered, what don't you want covered? Then we eternally say, okay, well, here's what we think is a reasonable amount. And we usually would say, let's give that a whirl for a year, a commitment for a year. After a year, we say, ah, wow, this is a little more than we expected. We need to renegotiate with you. Or you may say, gee, we don't think we're getting enough out of that. We don't want to negotiate with you. But a lot of towns do like that because it gives you some, you know, I'd say some budget certainty and it kind of frees up people to make those calls and emails where they might be a little bit hesitant to get the town attorney involved with. And, you know, like, it's like anything else, is, you know, if we can answer some questions in advance, it probably is going to help you stay out of problems that are going to get a lot worse, you know, down the road.
None of our, none of our towns who have that arrangement or who have had that arrangement have ever gone back to the hourly. We have, you know, we've had some that have gone from hourly to the retainer.
Well, it's a transition to a new firm also and trying to get a feel for... I was just going to say, you know, it's, that seems attractive certainly in starting out. I don't know what that, that looks like, certainly for us.
We have to get your bills for the last year. And we'd also talk about what's on the plate right now and just try to balance those two things and divide by 12 essentially. And, you know, litigation is almost always outside of it, bond work would be outside of it. But the run of the most stuff would all be included.
Kristen, do you have any questions?
Um, no, I think we've really covered a lot.
Got one in the back.
I think you guys have done this before, maybe a few times.
Not our first radio.
Steve?
Steve Winter, a decade or two ago, we, the town had a learning experience when a local lawyer was the lawyer for the town of West Bath and Bath. And a million dollar plus dispute came up. You are currently representatives of Brunswick. If you were to represent West Bath as well and a legal conflict came up between the two, how would you handle that?
Brunswick wanted to try to, you know...
Change the border.
I don't know. Yeah, it seems, it seems pretty unlikely that there would be such a dispute. But if there were, we're actually conflicted out of both sides of that representation.
Both would seek other...
Both would have to seek other counsel for that one matter only.
I've had this come up in the grand total twice in almost 40 years. One which is, well, it's not actually, one of, I mean, you get two towns. Actually, I've never had it come up where it's both, by both of my clients and the two towns. I've only had two situations where I've ever had two different towns that were like, you know, blatantly fighting each other, like we're with Kittery are. I had a dispute over a shared sewer, we started a treatment plan between Jake and Littlemore Falls. I represented one of the parties. It's a highly, it's unlikely, it's an unlikely scenario. But I think a little bit more of an issue, and we've kind of taken the position that we generally prefer to represent municipalities and not represent their school department because that's where we do find, from time to time, a lot of issues that do come up between the school attorneys and the town attorney and dealing with budget issues. It's a weird, under the law, it's strange because even though maybe a department, you know, of a town for many purposes are also considered their own, you know, legal entity. We found that there are confidentiality issues there and so forth. So that's a much more frequent situation, you know, come up. So we really shy away from being, the attorney of Agesta has a school department, not the attorney, you know, for the, for the school department. And we found that that's, it's a better practice for the towns that were representing.
And we do, by the way, represent a number of towns that have their own school departments. So Lisbon, Brunswick, Georgetown. So we do frequently get those kind of odd budgetary issues of, you know, whose job is it actually to do this or is the budget in the right format? Was it timely presented, that sort of thing?
Steve, did you have another question?
Yes, Steve Winter. What are your technical municipal hourly rates charges? You know, very...
Well, we didn't make a specific, they're typically in the proposal.
Two fifty-five, parallel is one fifty-five, associate attorney is two fifteen.
I don't know if we had any other specialty attorneys that we made exceptions for that or not.
We do have, you know, people in the firm who are billing as much as $500 and $600 an hour. They will be billing for the town under our cap rates. So you will not be seeing anyone bill at that kind of excessive, not excessive for what they do, but excessive for municipal law rates, rates.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? Susan?
Yeah.
Would you like to give us a last word before we say goodbye?
I wanted to say thank you for rescheduling and allowing me to attend my daughter's kindergarten graduation that got rescheduled due to weather, so I brought you a picture. You have to see that in person, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you for having us here today. You know, I, we would be very happy to represent you. I can see you have some challenging issues that you have to deal with, I think, or... I think we're, you know, well positioned to do that, you know, because it's, we have the experience and I, I think, uh, it's important to us to develop these relationships. I'm confident that we could do that with you if you guys decided to support with us. And which time we would be happy to sort of meet and greet department heads and other people and so forth and do what's necessary. Building up the practice has given us and we some experience in terms of taking over towns that we didn't represent, um, before and so. We'd be very happy to do that in this situation if you chose us.
You wouldn't want to be taking over the town.
Not like, not like, you know, like owning the town, taking over four or another, four or another attorney.
Okay, maybe then she could find out what to say.
She's appropriate.
I'm in, I'm in domain for the town.
Your husband, that's our hope.
Some of us will give the town to you.
You're welcome to take over the town if you assume its life.
Interesting.
That's Cam's department.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, thank you all very much. It's been a nice meeting you and it's, you know, it's an exciting opportunity and we're glad to participate. I think we could, you know, be good fit here and we definitely serve you well and hopefully be able to assist you with some of his problems and bring them up.
Also call our references. We, we have some really great long-term relationships and they will happily tell you about us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice to see you all here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right, thanks for the question.
Madeline, would you like to take the agenda out in order to accommodate that?
I will try to do that.
To accommodate that? I, yes, but first, since I've already taken the agenda out of order, could we deal with the consent agenda? Because that's important. Where the chat starts. The approval of the warrants and then let's put the, uh, upcoming board meeting discussion under future agenda items. Would you do that? I'm sorry, Madeline, I missed that. If we take upcoming board meetings to do, need to determine and put that under future, where the future agenda items are.
Okay, sure.
So that we're just simply act, acting on approval of the minutes and approval of the warrants. Motion to approve. I make the motion that we approve and set the agenda as written. Second, on paper. All right. Motion carries. And the opposed, you know, Karen's trying to teach me these things before she goes. Under, oh, let's, um, if it's okay, the two of you move, uh, Max up to, uh, position one on the agenda, since he's here. It's my, yep, okay. Take it away, Max.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dossel for those who, oh, please forget me. I believe I'm here today to talk about the community resiliency partnership. So for those who are not aware, uh, the Midcoast Council of Governments was awarded a grant to provide service to five communities in the Midcoast and one of them is West Bath. So at no cost to the town, I'm coming in to assist with, uh, providing a resiliency resolution, doing some workshops and speaking with some of your department heads to get an idea on, uh, resiliency projects for future community action grants. Uh, I think my name either is trying to get some direction on who to speak with, what group, whether it's an ad hoc group or an existing group or with the support directly, uh, who I should be working with in this topic area or if you have any questions about what I'll be doing going forward on it.
Could you, could you just say more about what the resiliency, um, program covers?
So it's part of the Governor's Office of Policy and the Creative Future and it's part of the Maine Won't Waste Resiliency and, uh, Storm Damage Program that the state created through the Governor's Office. The whole point is to go through sort of a checklist and see what items towns can do to reduce carbon emissions, to, uh, have more energy efficiency products and usage in their public home facilities or ways of trying to mitigate some public infrastructure so it's not impacted by storm hazard data, or storm hazards. Sometimes take the, as an exercise on culvert, um, reviewing their culverts. I think locally, Topson's doing it by now for greenhouse gas emissions so that they can then see what can be done to reduce it. I helped Walder River recently get a grant so that they can get a new HVAC system so that it's not using up as much energy and thus saving residents a couple bucks on maintenance costs. Uh, other towns are doing it with, uh, solar farms on cap ground fields or landfills, um, LED conversions, heat pumps, uh, some are doing electric vehicle per, EV purchases or chargers in the community. There's a bunch of different topics that can be done and it all comes down to just trying to reduce carbon emissions and, um, prepare for storm events pretty much.
So like Birch Point Road with water issues?
Yeah.
Could be kind of cool.
Assuming it's flooding.
Well, if we have washout, there's things that happen there, so there's storms.
So that would be one of the, I have to keep my, sorry. And it could also be more civil network, networking, like educational programs with the schools to learn about invasive species or, uh, diseases that are spread through, uh, like mosquitoes or ticks or anything like that. Or emergency callouts, phone trees, so that when an emergency happens, everyone does have a way of contacting even if it's, uh, someone who's a bit more isolated.
So can we, I, can we think about it, because everybody has to come up with a plan.
So what I'm going to be doing, what I'll be doing as a consultant on behalf of the town, because you don't have to pay any consultant for this, is I'll be talking with a group that, that you would like me to speak with. Some towns will already have a committee already formed that focuses on resiliency issues. Others will just create an ad hoc that's just, you know, some department heads, first, one or two people from different committees and groups. And then I'll speak with that group as well as the department heads and put together a checklist, do a little public outreach, maybe a workshop or two in West Bath so that residents can come in and get their input. And then it gives you an idea of where you're at with all these different projects the state just has as recommendations. And you just create a resolution that just gives some broad idea of what you do aim to do. And part of the comprehensive plan did talk about energy efficiency upgrades with the school and town office building. So that would probably be one of the common items you would have in a resolution and that's what we would be applying for. But there might be something else that comes up in these public discussions.
Are there multiple grants that we can apply for? Do we qualify or is it just a particular grant?
Uh, it's particularly the community action grant right now. There was something with DOT with, uh, um, culverts, um, adaptation. I haven't seen that one yet, but they have just started another round for infrastructure adaptation fund. And they'll look more favorably on towns that already have done some research on, um, culverts that have been damaged by storms.
What about culverts that potentially will be damaged by storm surges and that sort of thing? We have a couple that.
Yeah.
Places where the roads have built and hold.
Yeah, um, the exercise that we're doing right now does help just get that data collected so that you do have a more, you do have it centrally located so that when these adaptation funds from DOT for culverts or, or washouts are happening, you do have this right here that's just showing the local knowledge and data that's, um, backs that, that's pretty much. Because that's what they're looking for.
Okay. So would you suggest, uh, creating a task force?
If there are volunteers in the community that may be interested, I, it would be a very, at least with what I'm doing, it would be a quick one. I don't imagine it happening longer than the rest of the calendar year. But if that group would like to stay on and focus on the implementation, that'd be great. But a task force or, uh, any volunteers would be appreciated. If we don't get that, then it's just a little bit more work on my end, but it's, it's still fine.
So a committee isn't required as part of the process?
A, a, a resiliency committee isn't required, but at least an ad hoc group.
An ad hoc group, so that's.
So it's a, it's an ad hoc.
Yeah.
However you call it.
Yeah.
Okay. And five people?
That would be a good number. And they can be mixed with town officials and, uh, relevant volunteers.
Okay.
Okay. I like it.
Okay, um, what do you need from us?
Uh, it was more me just providing the information for you. I'll probably talk to Christine about what are the next steps happen for that. Uh, if it's going to be some volunteers coming in, I think we just need to get the word out there and see if you're interested.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And Steve, did you have something?
Yes, another question.
Yep.
Uh, one aspect of resilience may be a little bit off your direct trust, but maybe not. It's a concern for a lot of residents in West Bath, which has a lot of shorefront property, is to move forward to prevent, uh, further damage from increasing sea levels, perhaps worsening storms. And in that regard, how does this resiliency program work and facilitate some movement on it? Do you, or your group have any coordination with Maine DEP, which influences that to a breaking extent?
So when you're saying further development on shoreline.
I'm not talking about further development, I'm talking about protecting what is there.
Well, this would be more of, sort of identifying, and this is also going to tie into the land use or, and provisions that are going to happen soon. It's more of identifying some of the wetlands, the ones that are kind of showing sea level rise projections as well. Um, I can't, I, I'll be doing the ordinance work, but it's then up to the town whether they want to decide on actual restrictions and shoreline zone and whatnot, so, um, I, I'm pretty much just getting the data that is from DEP and from beginning with Pabatas as well. And that's then up to the town I have a pursuit of.
Let me get the, very specific. Say I'm concerned of my house washing into the sea. And 500 other people in town are concerned that their house is washing into the sea and what they can do to prevent that other than going to all LEDs, perhaps working more directly. To what degree does your program assist those folks?
This would be something like, uh, planning and preparing for that if that is one of the identified, uh, pieces in town. It probably won't result in a, a grant that gives every single person their own seawall, but perhaps education and working with other communities that have had similar issues and how they've been able to address that so that even if it's not town providing whatever cost it is to prevent that from happening, you would at least be aware and be able to connect with someone who might be able to, um, do it, but it would probably come out of the private homeowner's house.
Of course, but it would be useful to highlight that problem and increase people's awareness of what possibilities might be. And the further question is, in is that is very much in DEP's daily work. Does your program have any association with them to discuss such issues?
For this program specifically that I'm doing, DEP wouldn't be involved, but I can reach out to them at part of the process if that is good, such a concern, good.
There are many people here that might be concerned.
Any one else with questions, comments? And, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I hear they asked me to build it.
Yeah, I know, I, it's a point of time, but I'm at the clock.
The universal question.
It's timeless.
Blessings.
People kept me in attention.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, back to old business. So are we going to select the legal firm this evening? Now that you've heard from all them? That would be, um, I don't, I'm not sure that I'm ready to, to do that tonight. What do you, what do you think? My concern is, I think I want to go review the other two because all that's in my head right now is this one and I've kind of forgotten what the other two have said. Yeah, that was, I'm not sure I can make a good decision.
I have it as item five that you could always table it.
So we have some, the next meeting will be before.
Well, we need to determine that later because the next meeting would be before the July.
Right.
I have plans.
I have work.
Yeah.
I'll do it today.
Yes. I'm not sure. I was happy on the fourth, I think. Have you heard?
No comment.
There's, there's, there's a potential family home display on Milco. Awesome. Let's put it on the town website.
On the sign.
Yeah. You, you may, you may see it, Jane. Second item on the old business is to be, you invest for the spring work? Well, we have three, one for each of you.
Okay.
Let's check them out.
So one of those is for my son, so I would not like to open that one, which is.
Well, do you know, right?
I do. I'll take this one.
He's having a bad one here.
Yeah, maybe they're paying a.
Grab already.
Didn't we just hear about.
I think I need this open for me.
Yeah. The packing, uh, tape.
As you see on the.
Yeah. Very little.
Let's try this again.
I'm afraid if I try ripping it out, just.
Let's go from this side.
Tear off together.
You can take that one as a kindergarten.
They would want to put the charpence in your hands and be careful.
I should put it mine off here.
Okay. Go ahead, sweetie.
I have a, a submission from Leanne Poehler from Phippsford, Maine for $7,000.
I have one from Scranton Drayson for $6,755. And I have one from Midcoast Excavation for $6,601.
That's interesting.
Leanne Poehler is the winner. So we need a motion to approve the highest bid. I know that we accept the highest bid.
Seconded? Any discussion? On paper, accepting the highest bid. And opposed?
My son. He's not a voting member of the board.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, review proposals for winter maintenance properties, uh, for town properties is next on the agenda?
We did not receive any proposals.
Okay, so.
Yes, we're all staying home this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we can try reaching out to a number of people directly. Um, if you can tell me who you might want to send solicitations to. It was advertised in the paper twice. Um, it was on our website and Maine Municipal's website. Um, but we may need to try reaching out directly if we want to get somebody. Um, it appears that Mark isn't interested this year.
So this is, um, for the school, the historic buildings, the town?
Yes, all of the town buildings had a fire department, yeah.
So should we. So should we reach out to local contractors?
Well, Midcos was the only company that requested a packet, but they didn't submit it.
I'm just wondering if I should send out to Jorgensen. Helping people.
No.
Yeah. Who else is...
Steve.
Oh, yeah. Steve, maybe? Well, um, local contractors?
Maybe close again?
My eyes are going up and down the road.
Any suggestions, other suggestions from other residents?
Does, do you want me to try other landscaping companies? Aren't these random?
'Cause I think a lot of you do that level of...
Yeah, winter maintenance, we have that kind of equipment. The availability is a real issue.
We, we use it this year.
Wedy had actual trimmed his list, so he might be a little...
What's that again, Wedy?
Wedy, I, I'm good enough.
Okay.
I don't know how it's called Wedy, but he is.
You have, you're looking at this information.
Oh, Dale Regal's another one.
He's about shiny.
Is that what he was thinking of, like? Is that what you were thinking of?
No.
Yeah.
I think he does that actually for the woodchick. Can we get back to that, Mike?
He'll get back to you on that, he's looking.
Okay.
$7,514,661.
And why don't you spell it for Christine? That should appreciate that.
Yeah.
It's Wendell, but it's Wedy, W E D D Y, it's not the name he goes by.
Okay.
And I thought you were saying W E T D Y.
So too.
I'm sure he prefers not me.
I think we'll get some interest this way.
Yep.
Emily asked me to tweet a few things on her scope of work, so this would be an opportunity to do that, too. Just minor things about the sidewalks. That's good.
Yes. Okay. We're ready for reviewing proposals for assessors' agent. We have this from RCS Assessment Services, Inc. And they are proposing the use of a CMA at $125 an hour and listers at $85 an hour with contract fee of $18,000 for six months and estimate, estimation of 20 days work. And they included a client list. This was the only response that we got. So it says the team consists of four certified main assessors, two residential commercial property listers in the GIS mapping coordinate that have filed in 20 years experience. So I just wanna, I would like to hear what the program has to say.
I'm, I'm not real clear on if they have the expectations. It looked to me like they're looking at doing the current years and not the backlog and the hours, their estimated hours at 20, 20 days or something like that. I, I don't see... It, it doesn't quite balance out that they have the entire scope of, of what they're looking at. I'm not sure that they're speaking. I'm not sure the town that they have a clear understanding.
I think I can field that from my conversation with him, if you'd like me to.
Yes.
The estimate of the 20 days work, he said that that would be really for the commitment process. And since he didn't understand what he would be walking into, because he, I gave him the sense that it was pretty complex and that a lot of work had to be done, the flat fee would apply to the rest of the work. He said that there was no way that he could estimate that. So in that case, the flat fee would apply.
So the, the flat fee would be for six months at $18,000 and anything after that is $125 an hour?
Essentially, yes. That's another way of looking at it, from my understanding, but I would imagine we don't speak with them anymore.
We would have to get that clarified.
Yeah.
What are your...
Anticipating that he will step forward in the interview. The experience with waterfront is critical. I only glanced at what was in the packet attached online two or three minutes before coming in this evening. But none of those towns indicate experience with waterfront. Their cumulative years of experience for inland domain. I have neutral reaction. For the complexity of the intricacies of the waterfront in the current use applications here in this town, I feel we need a very in-depth conversation, similar to what you had with Kristen Group. I've been in more which longer than she's been their attorney, and she's clear. But that was a great in-depth conversation. I anticipate it will be the same with this individual. Remember the documents that you have over there? Yesterday's group assessment that we were hearing would have left me with deep concerns. I articulated a month ago that the written extension timelines needed to be collected and they need to be transmitted to Mark Bauer prior to that board meeting. We were all here from our head with what Mark implied, that the, that information never went forward from via Christine, via from whomever, to that attorney. And it appears a strong likelihood that as the concern expressed was valid, you're outside that jurisdiction timeframe. If that is valid, you have an issue for all these other people. If that needs to be addressed before you go into government, you're going to hit that timeline dead on and these people are going to be dying whales on the beach. And with the time this individual is under the, they have, if they are not hands-on familiar with waterfront assessment, I do not see how that is going to be accomplished with you relying on them to do that. Just an observation. To minimize the seriousness of experience with waterfront will be very much a disservice to this unit.
So I have a couple of questions concerned. This is the only one we got. We wanted the attorneys to start July first, was that our initial goal, or is it a different date, or...
The attorneys?
We were...
Yeah, we were told the date for the attorneys to be hired before we even went down this path of any of us getting involved in the payment.
So was July 1st one of our original...
That was the target for the attorneys, yeah.
And...
You will no longer have a town attorney after July 1st, other than what you had some...
Other question is, when they talked about, and it just sounded like they had some ins and outs for us, to put this on hold for a year.
Yes.
To get it done and get it done right. I'm just wondering if the attorney should come before the assessor, just, I don't know, I'll just put it out there.
I think you really need counsel, for sure.
One piece of critical information was not related to Kristen. You've changed camera software. We own property in Brunswick, we lived through the entire scenario to which she made reference in Brunswick as taxpayers in Brunswick, so it's not, we just looked at the line of the time track. They didn't change their camera software. They could simply look, we have all of this new data, we have these new cost tables, we will literally hold it at abates over here in this database, and we will continue on with the existing database. You do not have that luxury. You have already incorporated, activated, gone to commitment, a whole new database. You cannot go back to vision. You are in the sleuths way and there is no way to get off that sleuths way. You are in it, and you've been in it for a year, well, close to a year. So she doesn't know that.
So that being said, you shouldn't give the attorney first, am I correct?
Yeah.
She needs to be named before that.
A thorough understanding of where I are or I'm not.
Jane, did you...
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I was also gonna ask Juanita, what she would recommend that we do, 'cause you, I don't know anything about this, but do you recommend hiring the attorney and then putting it in front of her and getting her in some how to proceed?
I have permission to answer candidly. I, there's no doubt that's going to be a change from popular reason. I've been saying that since last September.
Well, I agree with that, too.
Thank you. No matter what the attorneys try to reach out to, Gavin, if it's not there, it's gonna come out dry. I do not see any way, except for you who took the odds, to resolve the remainder of those abatements before you go to commitment. 'Cause they can't pull up data from somewhere, I'm the assessor in moment, she can't pull up my database. I mean, they've given it to you, but it won't solve the issue.
So just a question, Juanita, if, and how many is left, Christine?
Thirty-six, I think.
Maybe, I've forgotten the number, but I think it's around that.
If those 36 people took the time to complete the abatement form, now we can review this on a yearly basis, is that true?
You can, but you're into this year.
Right.
Once you go to commitments, all of these people have already completed the formal request and abatement.
Right.
You have that from every one of them.
Right.
The only remaining responsibility is you three as the elected assessors to make a decision.
Well, I'm saying, if we go through and make a decision on those, hire the attorney. I just wonder if that's the best option at this time.
I don't see that the attorney is of any help to you on the assessment. They don't have data and information, they're not going to have an opinion. They may ultimately be able to weigh in on legal resolution steps, though they think there's an arbitration clause, that there would have been one, had salad daggits made it through administration to you people. But even didn't get it, it never made it through to you, that had arbitration. The contractor that doesn't even reference arbitration.
Well, it appears that we've also timed out on being able to deny and send them forward based upon jurisdiction. So it's now in our lap and only in our lap.
And it has been in your watch, ever since whatever your date was, February 28th, whatever your date was.
So my question is, because it's 36, we're running out of time. We don't have legal counsel, we don't have a clue what we're doing, so they just be approved from that and start this process?
That is a question that because genuinely I conform with USFAT, the Uniform Standards Professional Appraisal Practice, I conform to that. I, I can't express an opinion. Every one of those should be looked at on its own merits and the decision needs to be made. And frankly, I don't see how that could be done, especially on the waterfront ones, without being on site and observing the conditions and circumstances.
But would the attorney make help provide, if we choose to go there and make a decision, they can help us make sure we're not getting ourselves into a predicament as we prove...
Mark Bauer, you're paying for that. Take his advice, he knows if you're outside of the jurisdictional window. You've talked to Beth with Steve, you've had him down here. You all could have taken the board assessment for your training, didn't take it, could have. Christine could have. Mark Bauer instructed it, Ryan was involved in it. Those attorneys cannot change the jurisdictional envelope that you are in. They may help you with monetary, if data exists. He said, the gentleman in the middle, exactly what we advised last September. Tell your law firm to frighten them, give us the data or we'll do something. And it didn't happen. They can't help you, you are way beyond that. That is a completely separate question, I'm answering you honestly to the best of my ability. That shit's safe. You are in the open ocean and we're the food for the sharks. You have got the only honorable life raft and you're taking on water and your pump has stopped working. And it is up to you to save us and those attorneys have no involvement with that.
So...
Again, I'll...
Just ask again, we should, the three of us, look at those abatements. We need to go out on site.
Most likely.
Go out on site. And that should be our first priority.
So the sake of taxpayers, Kathy, yes.
I just wanna make it clear, so when we walk around, you know, trouble I find with these meetings, we walk away and all have a different opinion.
Yeah. The appellate yesterday said with clarity and I respect what he said, but Mark had, I believe Mark, someone very reasonably said, well, would cite photographs of what they're describing for the discrepancy with the waterfront as this proceed? Would those photographs be enough? And he's correct. He articulated, no, you really gotta see it. I know for my own... You've gotta see it compared to what is on those tax cards. He articulated that and they didn't want their Airbnb tenants disturbed in particular. I mean, they had a vested reason to say, oh, the project is gonna be fucked for us, don't stir the fuck... Right. He's right, you gotta see it. So that would be one example.
So we should go out, I assume, in a long time?
Yes.
I would agree with you on that, and that's tough to schedule based on my own experience trying to find a low tide for the photos that I took of mine. Not easy.
Let me ask one different question on that.
So how many, and I guess Christine, if you could tell us, how many of these abatements are waterfront and not waterfront? 'Cause that's a piece that if we're, if we're trying to determine that, where these folks might be able to help on non-waterfront? And we manage, I mean, that's...
Well, yeah, if it was like 15 waterfronts, we could divide it by five. That would be a little bit easier.
Do these people, are they accomplishing trade?
Yes.
Which, are they doing full mini-trail, short mini-trail?
We didn't get into that one, you know.
That's a piano, sort of thing, piano suburance.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, you know, so if we only have one submission for a tax assessing assistance, and if half of... and if half of our abeyments are not waterfront, are you confident that they could take those on?
No, not at all, I've never heard of them. I have no benefit, I haven't heard them interviewed, I have no benefit. But I have a strong recommendation that unless they are highly experienced and complex waterfront, this place is gonna be. Enough of the challenge that I would anticipate, you're gonna be lucky, they stick with you for six months and you're gonna be in the water and you're gonna follow.
So I agree with a couple of things, I think before we make a decision, we should interview them.
Yeah.
Can I offer an idea?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I agree with Juanita that where we've got a lot of work to do. We're all in agreement that we want to get out of this and get back on track. Would it possibly make sense to have all of the potential layers in the room so that all of the questions could be talked about and responses could be had at the same time instead of having the lawyers show up at a different time than the potential assessors they did? You know, have, have the select one here, have Josh Barry here, have whoever you choose for an attorney, have everybody in the room so that all of the questions could be asked at the same time. And you can find a path forward.
I think yes, Adele, I think six months ago?
Yes, now I'm worried about time.
And Mark Bauer is the expert on this round of assessing, period. He is the attorney that MMA has noted. He has taken on the role of Saudi debit long fulfilled. The MMA to instruct every assessor in the state, including me. I took it, they can't ever take it too many times. Steve, I'm sure took it from a revenue service. He's the expert. They're not anyone expert. Kristen has not had any issues from which I've been her assessor, I can say that factually, that's not bad one. He's the expert. You're already paying him, your board of assessment review is relying on him. If you want legal advice about this, get all the paperwork, everything and write it out, any extension deadlines, it just needs to be presented to him. Boom. It, I would have thought it was in the files, I was surprised when Christine came downstairs and that stuff was in the file. It just.
Well, I did not print everything out because people have been having issues with copies. So I have not many copies to put into the files, but I will be reviewing everything.
I would expect the originals would have been in the file even if you didn't make copies, but that's not the end of that.
No, it's emails, I would have to make copies.
So are you saying at this point in time, our best option is to get all the files together and have Mark review them?
No, and thank you for asking me to clarify my statement. I don't think any attorney is going to be of any help in the decisions that the three of you must make about these open abeyments. We have zero help, it's not the world with the role of expertise. In terms of having any attorney involved with it, I, the only thing that Mark needs to be weighing in on is the jurisdictional window. I am confident you've exceeded it. I am confident that unless there, Christine has something that says there was an extended date beyond the date of that board of assessment review hearing yesterday, there's no jurisdiction for your board of assessment review to continue with the hearing. It's cooked. And I am confident that that is every other open abatement of any nature, period. Mark is the expert if you choose to reach out and ask him that. He is of no help with the assessed values. These attorneys are of no help with the assessed values. It's up to you.
So what I hear you saying now is we need to ask Mark if we're in, outside of that window?
I would suggest that, yes. You need to produce what Christine has said she will find. Those appellants specifically also searching their own databases to see if there was something in writing with a certain date. You can ask Mark to clarify that the implied extensions.